Good evening. Welcome to the April 29th Kittle Hills Board of Commissioners meeting in open forum. If you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would also please join us for amendment of silence before we move forward with our agenda. Thank you. Okay, let's move forward then with agenda approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, real quickly before we go into new business, those of you who may have read, the board, we actually started our afternoon at four o'clock today at the Community Care Clinic of DARE. We all took a tour of the Community Care Clinic. Rick Gray, the executive director, and Janet Jarrett, the chairman of their board, gave us the tour. Great, great visit, and learned a lot of certainly what they're doing. And we also had some videographers with us, and we're going to put together our destination DARE segment for the town of Kittle Hills. We do a monthly segment, and it's going to cover the partnership that we have with the Community Care Clinic, in hopes that we can further help spread the word about the great work that they do and the access to care for those who are uninsured in our community. Get a plug out for that. Thanks.
Yeah, it was a great tour.
Okay, with that, let's move on then to new business, item number one, A. We actually have two public hearings that we're looking to schedule this evening. The first one is item number A, they requested amendment to chapter 153 zoning DARE Resorts Inc. to amend that section 153.096 ocean impact residential zone to allow fishing piers to have onsite accessory uses or buildings. And am I doing an introduction for us?
Sure. Yeah, the first item is a zoning text amendment request submitted by House Engineering on behalf of DARE Resorts Incorporated. This will be an amendment to chapter 153.096 ocean impact residential zone permitted uses for this due review to allow fishing piers to have onsite accessory uses or buildings. On April 21st, the planning board reviewed this amendment and forwarded to you all with a favorable recommendation, and staff recommends setting the required public hearing for May 13.
Great. Do you have any questions about scheduling this public hearing?
Just to be clear, the use of an accessory use or building, in this case it is a restaurant?
No.
Do I understand?
Our zoning ordinance defines an accessory use as something that is clearly subordinate or incidental to the primary use.
To the primary.
I believe their intention is to construct a restaurant.
Okay.
Now, I'd love to know if I'm right.
Okay. A motion would be in order to schedule the public hearing for May 13, Wednesday, May 13th at 5:30.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signal as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, the second public hearing to schedule is regarding a conditional use site plan. The applicant is Mary McCormick. This is for 808B Eighth Avenue in the light industrial two zone, and this is to modify the site plan to remove workforce housing designation from the unit. And Brian, anything to add there?
Just that on April 21st, the planning board reviewed this and forwarded it to you with a favorable recommendation with four conditions that are outlined in your memo. And staff recommends setting the required public hearing for May 13 as well.
Any questions?
No, we've been through this before back there. It's pretty routine, I think, yeah.
It is, it's just the legal and procedural process that we have to follow to be able to do this.
They're still within balance, right, with the ratio or...
Every unit that they convert from workforce to market affects the ability to continue with their cycle plan as approved. Originally 20 units were approved, only 10 were constructed, so with every conversion from workforce to market affects their ability to construct their remaining tenants.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? A motion would be in order to schedule this public hearing for Wednesday, May 13th at 5:30.
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please signal as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, we're going to just take one second and relocate so we can start our public forum. We'll just move down to the table there. Before we move into the public forum, I would like to recognize Commissioner Beverly Boswell. She's here with us this evening from the DARE County Board of Commissioners, so thank you. Also PDH President, so thank you, Beverly. And for those of you who have not been with us before during a public forum, we do this twice, most everyone has, I'm preaching to the choir, but for anyone that later may be watching this, we do this twice a year as an opportunity to really try to have a little bit more informal dialogue or discussion with our citizens or remember one wishes to come out and attend these meetings, where they can really bring any topic that they wish to talk about to us. We don't restrict the time that you speak like we typically need to do during our public comment opportunity. So these have been really valuable in the past, these public forums. I know historically we've been able to provide a lot of guidance to the Community Affairs Commission, we have our chairperson here for that. Anyway, we typically have received just great ideas and direction in these more casual settings, so that's the reason we continue to do them. This one we did when we advertised it, we did specifically put on there beach driving is something that we would like to hear about from any of our citizens if they have any comments they would like to make. We are looking at an upcoming meeting, possibly even our main meeting, looking at adopting some regulations or revising some of the regulations related to beach driving. So with that, anything else, anything they want to share that will open it to the public? I guess first and foremost, does anyone have any comments specifically on beach driving, and then we can move to just any comments overall. All right. Well, I have heard, just really, really briefly, I have heard from a few people that called with questions about our beach driving regulations, what we're looking at doing. And by the end of the conversation with all three, who initially had a little bit of concern, all three actually were in favor of what we're doing when they understood that we're looking at having a combined approach with NAGS Head, where we will honor NAGS Head's driving permit in Kittle Hills, and they're looking at honoring ours as well. You could purchase one in NAGS Head, it's going to be valid in PDH and vice versa, and like I said, after each of those conversations, they both went, wow, that's a really common sense approach that we argue with. And they also understood the reasoning behind it, was really trying to be able to get more education, information out there to the public on, you know, how to drive safely on the beach.
I had one email, and the person that I spoke to, neither one of them are against beach driving per se, and one of them did know about what the plan is to do, and that was okay. They both did mention, however, that they might suggest that we revisit it after the beach nourishment is complete. And I don't, I'm not saying we will or we won't, obviously we haven't been at that time. I think we might expect to hear that issue come up again, which is fine, because we'll discuss whatever needs to be discussed, so I think we might, might be looking at it in a span of a year or two, but we can also change it.
Anyone else have any comments on beach driving?
No.
Okay, well now, does anyone have any comments at all? And if so, just if you wouldn't mind still going to the podium, and that's more just for the microphone, so the cameras pick that up, otherwise when we air this later, people won't hear the questions. If you don't mind, just go ahead and introduce yourself, that would be great. Anyone?
I'll start off.
Okay.
Beverly Boswell, 321 June Court. First of all, I'd like to recognize the Public Works Department. They always go over and above and beyond, and it makes Kittle Hills a wonderful place to live, so I want to thank them for doing an exceptional job. Also, I have another compliment for the Civil Landmark Commission, with their tour of homes, which was always fun and entertaining as well. It was a great afternoon, and the self-guided tour is just awesome, and the signage made it easier to find homes this year. The only complaint I have is I've seen a lot of no parking signs. I didn't know if something was going on that I wasn't aware of, and I've seen a cluster and a clutter of them, and I didn't know if there was a rhyme or reason, or if some of them can be taken down or not. It's just a thought, but overall, I love living in Kittle Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. And if you don't mind, about the no parking signs, any particular areas where...
I've seen a lot in cul-de-sacs, especially where I'm at, but I mean, it's just like everything big, it seems like, or might be my imagination, where I'm just really starting to notice them, and at different levels and heights, so especially around my house, but that's, that's fine. We're still parking there, by the way, but it doesn't matter.
All right, thank you.
We had this issue come up before, I think, and actually had someone look into it, and it was, they, I know Greg and I looked at it, it was, the signs were being placed where the, it had already been designated no parking, the signs just had not previously been there, or there had not been as many signs. So I don't know if that's the case here, but we can easily look at that and see, we can pull that up and see, so.
Who else would like to, to, Ms. Brim?
My name is Brandon Harris, and I'm at 215 West Ocean Acres Drive. And this is regards, kind of wrote up a statement here, this is in regards to the workforce housing that is on the agenda tonight, but it's kind of as it applies to my current situation as well. My name is Brandon Harris, I purchased a workforce housing unit in Nature's Walk Development in 2010. At the time that I purchased the townhouse, it was a good fit for myself and my family. My wife and I are both teachers at the First Flight Schools here in Kittle Hills, and we love the town here, we love living here, we love our lifestyle, it's given a lot to us. When I purchased my townhouse, I thought that I would be able to qualify for assistance from the Outer Bank CDC, but after a long process of working with the CDC, I discovered that I did not qualify for any financial assistance. So I ended up purchasing my workforce unit with a traditional mortgage, and as time went on, my wife and I decided to expand our family, and found a great deal on a home in Kittle Hills, it would give us more space, that's where we are now, and we've got our son now, we love him. So we put our townhouse on the market on two separate occasions, but had no interest from buyers. We decided to rent our workforce unit as a long-term rental two years ago, and the Outer Bank CDC gave us permission to do that. The financial burden of managing and maintaining a rental property has become too high for my family, so we must sell our workforce unit, and it is my understanding that a workforce unit cannot be sold without either approval from the CDC or release from the CDC directed covenants. And since the local bank, or the local Outer Bank CDC is closed, it seems that if qualified buyer does not come along, then our only option would be to seek release from those covenants. I've learned of a current owner who is also seeking a release, she has expended a great deal of time and money to pursue the release, and I'm speaking today to shed light on the issue as it's a current unintended financial burden for my family and for the other seller. Also, the issue is bound to arise in the future as more owners wish to sell these workforce units. When first implemented, the concept of providing affordable workforce housing was a great idea, but due to unpredictable economic changes and unpredictable loss of a local organization to regulate and oversee the management of these units, the idea has evolved into a significant restriction that is harming those that it was kind of designed to help. And if the Outer Bank CDC was still around to help find the qualified buyers for those units, I believe the problem would not be as significant as it has become, because we have help in finding those buyers that fit that mold. After doing my own research, I've started the River City CDC, and Elizabeth City has agreed to take on the responsibility for implementing the workforce housing ordinances here, but in the same letter, they state that they have no interest in purchasing the most recently listed property. Let's see, and it seems as if there really isn't much of a mechanism in place now to help owners of workforce housing units to find those qualified buyers. However, these owners are still being held to the restrictions of the workforce covenants there. We have seen one of these units be released from workforce housing before, but the vehicle and financial burden that it seems to be placing on those seeking relief, it kind of, it seems that this unpredictable situation has arisen where it's not helping the people that needed the workforce housing in the first place. But I believe that there should be a way that the owners of these units should be able to sell their workforce unit without having to go through, either one, having their house on the market for an unreasonable period of time, trying to find that buyer that fits the mold, and also without having to pay any unreasonable amounts of money and attorney fees or town fees or things of that nature. And I understand it's difficult to just waive the restrictions, because the development was approved with very specific density requirements resulting from the density credits provided for including the workforce units. And Mr. Brightville had mentioned that the housing development has not yet been fully developed according to the approved site plan, so I'm sure that's how they kind of are looking at these density credits, and that they were approved for more density, but there's a lot of undeveloped part portion of that site plan that's allowing this to work out, which is great that it is working out for those who are needing it. And so, the solution that I was thinking of needs to be kind of reasonable and not a financial strain on hard-working community members that own the units. And I kind of go into my closing here, is where I was just thinking about some solutions. As a former civil engineer and a current high school teacher, I am all for innovative solutions to help everyone involved, just to kind of take care of everyone, it's all the same objective, to help everyone in the community, and they have a great place to live. But since there is no CDC in the Outer Banks to help us find the qualified buyers, it seems that maybe some reasonable solutions would be, one, waiving fees associated with releasing the units, as owners go through that process of having their home released. Two, maybe there could be a new ordinance that requires a workforce unit to be on the market for a set reasonable period of time under its current restrictions, and if no qualified buyer is found during that time, maybe we could have an automatic release from the restrictions, allowing the unit to be sold to any buyer, so you keep it just designated towards those specific clients that would qualify your workforce housing. But then if no one ever comes along, maybe it could be released to be open for any purchaser. And three, I mean, if it's absolutely required that the town maintains the workforce housing designation for the units, maybe there could be an agent of the town that can purchase some of these and then seek out qualified buyers, just to ensure that owners are not unfairly profiting, and I think that no one's looking for unfair profit, because I think they want to keep it reasonably priced for the next buyer. But I love the community in which I live and teach, and I strongly feel that there's a reasonable solution out there to take this original workforce housing idea and keep it going in the right direction with positive momentum and helping, helping those that it was designated to help. You know, it's a great idea built on great intentions, but I think some conditions have changed in the economy, and then some of us have found ourselves, and it might be a small group of us finding ourselves in a situation now where the great idea is kind of putting us feeling maybe a little bit stuck in some of these areas. My hope is that we can find a solution to help all those involved and keep our town moving forward to promote the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, and thank you so much for allowing me to share some of these thoughts with you today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Brim. Do you guys know who that...
Is it a house?
Who's bringing that?
Houses that, I think the school's correct.
Townhouses?
Yeah. I know, I know we've got a condition, I hate to sound blunt, but there's, I guess, closing costs and operating fees that are associated with that, is that a set, set of fees or...
The fees that are being collected by the town are original permitting fees that were waived when the development was constructed, so it's water impacts, tap fees, cycle plan fees, and building permit fees. It's nothing above anything that would be a part of any other new construction. The only thing beyond that is, our attorney's review gave into covenants that all the other fees were still close to $6,000, or just normal new construction fees that were waived at the time of construction that, once it goes back to market rate, the town has collected the rest.
What, how many were units were planned? Was it 10 more?
10 more.
So we've had one townhome that's now reclassified. Does that...
I think the ratio, if this is approved, would be six to four, six market rate to four workforce. So they could, in theory, convert all 10 of these to market rate, but that affects their ability to fill out the site adhitional plan because the density bonus that was awarded to workforce housing development.
And one of the reasons that this process takes so long is because not only is it workforce housing that has CDC involved, it's a conditional use which has different public hearing and appetizing requirements.
You said that was if this was approved, so right now it's...
It's not.
And in a way, for those that are finding themselves, Angela, Brandon, and Mary, who haven't found a buyer that can fit within the parameters to qualify for workforce housing, it's fortunate that those other units weren't filled out, because we wouldn't even have the flexibility to do this, to allow to have this change, so that is fortunate.
They would have to acquire more land to make the density work if this had to be done with all 10 units.
And the requirements, the impact fees, the water fee, that, that's, none of that has changed since this was all adopted and put in place, as far, I mean, the actual fee made, but the fact that the fee would have to be paid if this went from workforce to...
Correct. So we, we made this change in favor, would we be creating dead land back there? Can they still develop that other land for some other use?
They can construct more multifamily units, they may not be able to construct the full 10 of the multifamily units.
And if they can't construct this full 10, is that land...
It's part of their current site plan, which...
But they can still use it for something, just not be able to...
They can construct more multifamily units, and it's all been recombined into one site, one project.
So the CDC does, does the same developer, the owner of the undeveloped property, correct? Are they in favor or...
Christie's here, that's Christie Stallings here.
Hi, I'm Christie Stallings, let's see, their land development, and we own a parcel that's not been developed yet, and we're just trying to figure out a way to resolve something that didn't, didn't work based on what the CDC says would. We understand that removing these doesn't affect the density of what we can build out, and I still remember to look at that before we go any further in development. We proposed something a couple of years ago, and the planning board didn't agree with, and quite frankly, just felt like it was best to hold off until the market starts to improve, dictate what's needed. But the workforce housing is not, not a good idea. It was a good idea at the time when prices were escalated the way that they were, but I'm also a Realtor, and I'm the one who has the 808B listed for sale, and she's going to have to take less than what she paid for, plus being covered by having to pay that fee.
So the, I saw the price that was offered, I mean, that's not the full price, that price being the, the impact fees, so that price would be, also have those fees deducted from it?
Yes, so she's taking less than what she paid, plus having to pay that for the PDH and the CDS.
How does that CDC not pay here anymore, affect this? I know there's, the way it was all written, I mean, I don't know if there, did anybody seem to write in that the CDC isn't hearing more, what happens to disagreement, that there's, one of the parties isn't involved, which seems, seems to me to be kind of out of balance.
The ordinance does allow for another CDC to take over, and River City CDC out of Elizabeth City has agreed to do that, and that's one of the items, was they have first round refusal to purchase the property, and if they don't wish to do that, then they can refuse to buy the property. But they are acting on behalf of what was the Outer Bank CDC, I would imagine that they could help find qualified buyers.
And they can qualify, they can also, one of the, one of the functions of the Outer Bank CDC was to qualify buyers, to see if they were fit within those parameters to purchase it as workforce housing, and now the River City CDC, do you have an established MOU or MOA with them, or is it just a letter of intent?
We have, we have just been working with them through our attorney...
Okay.
And getting all that established, and just recently, you know, found out that they would be willing to work with the workforce development, not just the CDC.
My question is, and this, this might be a legal question without having to speak here, it might be tough, but what happens if the other four decide they want to do the same thing?
Then they would follow the same process. They would come before you, you set the public hearing, it's time to do it with the ones this evening. The requirements would be the same as far as paying, it's not repaying the fees.
Right, it's paying them the first time, exactly.
The fees have to be paid, that's part of what was to help qualified buyers to not have those, those fees that other people building houses in Kittle Hills were paying. So, and what, what Brian is saying is that at some point, depending on the number that get removed from workforce housing, it's going to affect, or it is affecting the density, because that was another one of the things that was allowed, was increased density to get workforce housing.
My question, and again, I always try to look at best case scenario, worst case scenario, and this is something I guess I would probably pose to you, if every, say everybody at some point in the next, you know, five years looks at this and says, okay, we need to, we can't afford to live here, and we can't do this anymore, what are we going to do? What, what at that point happens? If it becomes a zero to 10 situation, what happens at that point? Obviously...
It still affects how many units they can construct in the future. My guess would be that it would be five or six versus 10.
Okay, so they, so they could still, at some point, still construct some, it would just...
Could be as many.
And the assumption for that would be that whatever board was hearing the request of the public hearing approved it?
Well, absolutely, and again, I'm, I'm looking at best and worst case scenarios, but I just, I just want to make sure that we don't do something that doesn't make something completely finite one way or the other, but if, if what you're saying is true there, then we're, I'm, I think I'm getting my picture.
And Brandon, I appreciate your comments and understand, you know, you as, you all as buyers and purchasers and... But, you know, we certainly have legal parameters that we have to operate under, and we also, and I don't know, we don't have legal counsel here tonight, but we certainly can ask them these questions. I also don't know when, this was adopted a number of years ago, and these concessions were made and put into the parameters of how we would do this, you know, for example, waiving some fees to help get this, get this cycle plan design as it was, and allow for these units to be built. We did that because of the specific intent, and with some of the suggestions that you mentioned, while they may seem, they may seem logical, we also have to be cautious on doing unfair advantages to certain, to one developer and not being consistent with other developers, you know, where we are, and that's where you get into legal questions that I don't know the answer to, but I... to be built. We did that because of the specific intent, and with some of the suggestions that you mentioned, while they may seem, they may seem logical, we also have to be cautious on doing unfair advantages to one developer and not being consistent with other developers, you know, where we are, and that's where you get into legal questions that I don't know the answer to, but I think that we have to ask those questions, that sometimes it may seem like it's very logical what you're proposing, but because of those unfair or unstandard practices, we have to be cautious of that.
Right.
Anyway, there's some questions that I'd be happy to follow up and ask you.
Yeah, I think we should. Are there any other developers in the town that have even taken advantage of the workforce benefits when they were offered? I guess they are still offered to this day. So there's only one development in the whole town, being Nature's Walk, that falls into this category, so there would be a developer?
It seems to me that, based on what we've heard in the CDC and the market changing and people being able to buy another residence in town, there's, things have changed, I think, maybe drastically is too big a word, but they've changed a lot since this was set up, and it seems to me it's got to be some sort of resolution, because a lot of this stuff perhaps wasn't foreseen. And I think that's, as far as, personally, I would think that that might be a way that we can explore this and say, well, of course, I'm not going to say anything, but what we can do, because we don't know, but as you said, we just talk to our council and find out, and just make a, you know, make a list of, you know, what's changed and how significant is it, and is it really fair and equitable to have to remain at the stone between, so to speak. So I think I would definitely feel like we need to follow up on it. Great. Where do you, where do you teach?
First Flight High School.
High School?
Yes, sir.
You could get my granddaughter actually.
Oh, yeah? Because I teach AP Calculus and precalculus.
Oh, you won't be getting my granddaughter.
And buy her senior year after.
Maybe.
Yeah.
She's an honor roll student, but she's not?
Oh, she'll be there. I'll, I'll, I'll make sure she gets there.
And she's one of the good ones.
Yeah, oh yeah, she'll be, she'll be in there, a couple of years, she'll be there.
I don't know what you're going to get out of these meetings.
Does anyone have anything else they want to, Kelly, welcome.
Hello, Kelly Almody, 113 Port Hope Court. I know you do your open forums biannually, so this is my biannual plea to continue to brainstorm on ways that we can continue to get the public involved, not only coming to meetings, but coming to events and really taking an active role in helping us move forward as a community. I wanted to give a huge shout out to the folks who put together the Clean Sweep, it was so much fun. I think it was great having it at the Firehouse, they gave us a lot of exposure on the road. The T-shirts are great, they're bright, they're colorful, they're safe, but a lot of people, you know, noticed that we were out doing things, I think the kids had a great time, so I want to give kudos to everybody for organizing that. And I also wanted to say that I thought it was great at the last meeting to have so many homeowners here and people coming from out of town, people who own investment properties regarding beach nourishment. I know that we do have a section of our community who's going to shoulder a little bit more of the tax burden for beach nourishment, but I think it's great that they're also going to be able to take advantage of the benefits for having that beach stabilized in front of their properties and hopefully enable them to continue to make money for a little bit longer than if the beach was getting wiped away. But I think it was great that you proactively reached out to them and really personally invited them to come to talk about this topic, and they did, which was awesome. So continue to wear those creativity hats and see what we can do to reach out to get more people involved, because I think once people get involved, they'll realize how much fun it is and what a benefit their ideas can bring to the table. And, you know, so many things are going on around the world today in certain communities, and we're watching people fall apart, and, you know, our community is one that really does a great job of coming together, so I just want to kind of ride that wave and keep Kill Devil Hills and all of Dara County, it's a great place to live. Thanks.
You know, my solution to me is, we're going to talk about that.
Yeah, then I don't.
Okay. It's half a five o'clock.
It's five o'clock somewhere, according to Mike. Yeah, no, great points, and with trash attack, Kelly, that you mentioned, huge kudos to, one, Chris Merrick, who was kind of our organizer for that, but then also the town staff, Steve, your crew, and Elvis or Brian. We had a lot of staff, but without the staff, we could not have pulled it off, as well as all the volunteers, but thanks for mentioning that, that was great, great.
I think our participation from the year before increased like 250%.
We had a lot of.
Went from 80, I think it went to 80, something around there, to 200.
We ran out of T-shirts this year, which we had said, first comes our serve, last year we had some leftover, we ordered more than what we had last year and gave away last year, so obviously for next year, we'll order even more. Anyone else? Yes. Howard.
I'm Howard Campbell, 803 West Sportsman Drive. I'd really like to thank the commissioners for their foresight and biting the bullet and getting something done with our sidewalks, more especially the piece that I use every day from Sportsman Drive up to Cameron Street. Instead of walking up Bay Drive and then have to come back, now I can do the loop. And I know when we started, well, we started talking about sidewalks 10 years ago, and I give you folks a kudo for finally biting the bullet and taking the step and starting to get something done on the sidewalks. Also, I want to thank the board for some of the decisions that you folks have pushed forward, like the beach nourishment and stuff. I know it's not always popular when they spend money, but to keep our town like it is and to progress forward to where it's a wonderful place to live, I think we need a board that's a little progressive and willing to bite the bullet and spend the money on certain items that we need. And I'd also like to point out that when the board votes and approves something, they approve it and they tell staff, take care of it. So I really want to thank our town staff because the thing like the debris removal that they're going through now, I mean, you know, they did, they did our street, I mean, and they got in there, they did the non-brush stuff, and then the next day they come back and they did that, and they did it efficiently, and there was not a bunch of trash laying around, they really did a great job, and just wanted to thank the staff for that. So, I know Jerry's got a list, but a lot of the stuff, if you wait long enough, everybody will cover something that you go on your list, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Howard. Jerry, was that your cue to go next?
Well, let's see what did you cover. I'm very happy about beach nourishment, I know that that was a real bite your bullet too, because unless it's going to be settled, I think we're going to be much, much better off. The trash pickup you've covered, and I think that went very well. We were both involved in the trash attack, what, 10 or 12 years ago? We're happy to see that come back. So let me take a look here as long as we brought it up. I just think Howard, you've done a fantastic job, and we're both veterans of the planning boards, so we're here for a lot of that. I think you, I think you did it, and they did it.
Thank you, guys. Sue? Yeah, absolutely, please do.
No, I'm not sure I got that. Hi, my name is Sue Kelly, I live at 211 C Village Lane. The Community Appearance Commission just sent Ms. Diaz a letter, and it's already been well said tonight, thanking the staff for their efforts for trash attack. It was a great success, and we couldn't have done it without the staff. And one of the things we said is that our staff does all of this with a smile and a willingness, and seems to enjoy what extra work something like trash attack entails. But so many of the town staff helped, and it couldn't have happened, it would not have worked without the staff. And the only other thing I'll bring to your attention is that the CAC just finished doing an informal survey. I don't know if any of you saw it, it was on our website. We did it informally, so it wouldn't be the kind of survey that costs a bunch of money. And as such, it is just informal, people's opinions. And I have to say that, looking at it overall, people aren't really dreadfully unhappy about anything. Landscaping was a big issue, people want more, although there was a few people who said, there were a few people who said they would like less landscaping. But I will raise one thing that the CAC has discussed, but we do not have a specific position on, and that is these new big rental signs that are in the front yards along the beach road. I haven't really seen any on the bypass, you don't have that much commercial rental property, I mean, rental property, but on the beach road, within the last couple of months, these large signs. Now, what we learned at our last CAC meeting was that town code specifies you can only have one rental sign on your rental property. So one thing I guess we can do is communicate to these rental agencies that if they're going to put these big signs up, then they're going to have to take the sign that's on the house, the smaller house. Clearly, these signs make it much clearer who's renting the house, what the number is, et cetera. I think it was in the paper that the NAGS had, Planning Board had also taken up that issue very recently. So there are a lot of people who entered this survey with concerns about those signs, and I think the CAC will probably take it up again. I don't know if we will have a specific recommendation or not, but it's an interesting phenomenon that's just developed this spring, these big new signs, I imagine you all have seen them. But anyway, it's a lot of fun to work with this town and a lot of fun to work with the staff, and we thank everybody, you all included, who helped with trash attack and other projects of the CAC. And if you all would like a copy of this, I can make sure that you get it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, thanks to you for what you do. Anyone else that would like to share with us this evening? Any of you guys want to share?
I want to give the thanks back to people that serve and have served on our various committees and boards, and we have, I wouldn't try to rat them off, I heard everything, and dues are very low paid, zero. So we do appreciate that very much. As much as it couldn't have happened, these things couldn't have happened without staff, it's the same with our volunteers, that we have to do things on a one or two time basis like the trash attack, or people that come to monthly or twice monthly meetings to help us, give us guidance, and give the planning board guidance. That, that were very, there's not time for us, all of us, and even the planning board to look at our issue minutely, and it's nice to have it filtered as it comes up, and then we can deal with things on a basis of level of interest or importance, and I think that those kinds of people really help us and honestly pay us money.
And I'll just say, kudos to the staff. I, at my day job, I have been taking advantage of the police, fire, and rescue more than, more than usual, I'll say, and you would think working at a senior center, that would be something that's par for the course, but I can honestly say, we sometimes go years and never warn you guys, but it seems like in the last few weeks, we've utilized you more times than I want to count. So the response time is always is phenomenal, the personnel is great, the, it's, I just, I cannot sing your praises enough for police, fire, and rescue as well, and you all work well together, you blend together, you all work extremely well as a team, and I can't tell you the good comments I hear back after you leave about how great they all work together. So it's unfortunate that I've had to call you that many times in the last 20 days, but that said, I can, I can vouch for the wonderful fact that the response time is what it is and that you're there when we need you, so I can just double thanks. And everything turned out great on all the instances that we talked about, well. Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Otherwise, we will let staff, since we've been thinking of so much, go home early tonight. All right, thank you so much for coming out, I guess a motion.
I made a motion to adjourn.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you guys very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, everybody.